Good morning, it is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the September 20th, 2017 City Council Meeting. Welcome back to everybody. Let the record reflect that all City Council members and officials are present. I've asked the Fire Department to do a special blessing over our city in light of what we've been through, so if you would please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the hedge of protection. You have blessed the residents of Punta Gorda with through Hurricane Irma. We thank you, Lord, for the work of our city officials, our city workers, our first responders, as they work to keep the residents of our city safe. Before, and during, and after the hurricane, we give thanks to all of our neighbors who came together for one another in their time of need. Lord, we also pray for people throughout the state who have lost so much. We pray, Lord, that they receive the help and support they need at this time. Lord bless all the workers as they try to make things better. Now, Lord, we pray for the City Council as they make decisions that will affect so many. In the name of our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carlo. The first item of importance would be the presentation of our Emergency Management Director and the Hurricane Irma recovery update.
Okay, give you a quick little update. Ray Briggs, Fire Chief, for the record. It's been a busy two weeks for all of us. As a city, we've had a full activation of our emergency operations plan. Most of you are aware of that. We've exercised policies and procedures that previously have only been discussed. We took emergency communication to the next level. We provided real-time updates via social media webpage and utilized our Code Red system. As a community, we braced for the impact. We prepared for the flood. Fortunately, we were spared the level of damage and destruction that many of our neighbors have realized. As employees, we protected valuable assets by placing vehicles in the Herald Court Center by relocating resources, including our personnel, to higher grounds, specifically our wastewater plant. Big thank you to Tom Jackson for making that happen. Immediately following the storm, our employees worked through the night. They performed assessments of every neighborhood in the city. They removed down trees and debris from the roadway that allowed residents and utility crews quick access to restore power. As we all know, the biggest impact to the community so far has been the damage to our seawalls. While this will take some time to repair, just as we have in the past, we will recover. We're sure of that. And we'll be stronger because of it. Finally, I want to take the time to tell you how proud I am of all of our employees. I've worked for the city for over 27 years. I've never seen a more committed group of employees. I witnessed much self-sacrifice. They really took it personal, putting our community before themselves and their families. So I just appreciate that, and I know you all do as well. Additionally, I've been truly humbled by the outpouring of generosity from individuals, community groups, reaching out to our neighbors with food, clothing, and financial gifts. While there's always room for improvement, and we've identified some of those areas for sure, where we can get better, but all in all, it's a job well done. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Gehring. He's going to give you an update on our seawalls.
Good morning, Mark Gehring, Public Works. Well, as you know, we've had quite a few failures of our seawalls following the tide moving out with Hurricane Irma. As soon as we got back to work on Monday, we started almost everybody we could, well, everybody we could find, to assess the damage and get a handle on how much seawall failure we had. We assigned sanitation workers, right-of-way workers, anybody we could grab to actually just identify those areas on a map. We were inundated with phone calls, 300, 400, 500 per day. We got two volunteers in, and everybody at Public Works' phones were turned on to the switchboard line so they could take calls directly rather than have them go to voicemail or anything like that. We were at first overwhelmed by the number of calls. Condo complexes, everybody in the complex was calling if they had a seawall failure. We have Gary Dishron staff who worked with IT, and they came up with a new program to be able to input these. And so we now have a list of all residences that we've tracked so far, 894 of them, of who have problems. Were able to verify to them when they call that, yes, they have been logged, because what we had in place just couldn't handle that number of calls. So what we're doing now that we've kind of identified where the problems are, we've got a couple tasks ahead of us. The first thing is the emergency stabilization. There's certain cases where the seawall has gone. The pool or home might be built very close to that seawall, and there's a chance for erosion, which could cause catastrophic damage to that structure. So we're trying to identify all those locations, and we're working with different vendors to see what types of emergency stabilization they can provide for us. The next thing we're doing is we have some of our crews out actually roping off these areas with the caution tape. When you're talking 15 miles or so, that's a lot of caution tape. We haven't found anybody who's got that much on stock, but we're ordering what we can from the different vendors and trying to get that onsite. But it's going to take us a couple weeks at full power just to get those areas roped off. The next thing that we're doing, we will have to do, but we have not begun yet, is a detailed inspection of each failure. In order to give this work to a contractor, we have to identify exactly how many feet, what the limits of the project are, what the constraints within that project are that he's being paid for. He gets paid for different things that he performs for each one, and all that has to be identified. That could be, at our current staffing level, that could be a six- or eight-month project, at least, for those folks, just to identify what work needs to be done. So with the, identifying the ones that need stabilization, emergency stabilization, those are probably going to become the priorities for getting rebuilt. And they'll go to those sites first and figure out what it is we can do to save the pools and the houses and that sort of thing. We also have our right-of-way guys working on it. A lot of these failures include the drainage pipe that goes out to the canal, so they're working on their part of it as well. Once a detailed inspection is complete, well, after we get a few of the detailed inspections complete, we can get contractors working on it. We expect that the contractors will be working before we're ever done with all of the inspections. So they'll be happening simultaneously. Some things that we're looking to do, what we're trying to accomplish is, in one to two years, 15 years' worth of work. And in order to do that, we're going to have to ramp up a lot of what we're doing. So what we're looking at, ways of expanding our campus down at Public Works for the seawall panel operations. We basically need, at our current capacity, if we poured every day and used all of our manpower, would take us three years to pour that many panels. That's taking all the crews who do depression filling, cap inspections, all of those personnel would be dedicated just to seawall panel pouring for three years. So we'd greatly have to increase that capacity. And what we're looking at there is sending that out to a contract and having that contractor pour the panels on our property. We need a great level of inspection and supervision over the panels. We have had panels poured down in Lee County. Every day, we have to send an inspector down there to make sure we got all of our steel in the right places in those panels. So I think we're seriously trying to find ways that we can pour those panels onsite so our inspectors can be right there and control the process. Also, I don't think there's many seawall panel casters out there that have capacity that we do. You know, we're one of the, I've been told by different firms that have looked at our seawalls that we're the largest owner of seawalls outside the U.S. Navy. So, you know, we're just...
Can we contract them?
I'll get ahold of, I think I saw an admiral in here, or whoever that was. Not sure if he's Air Force or what he was. So, once we get a way to pour all of these panels, simultaneously, we'll be looking to let federal contracts. Our current contract, we've been told, is not adequate to put these seawall panels in place because it doesn't meet the federal contract requirements of wage and hour rates and all of the different things that FEMA throws at us to do. So Marion Pace is working on that to try to get the contracts in order. Then, so I think I already mentioned it, we're looking at a one-to-two-year window to get this done, understanding that it's probably three months before we get the first one in. So, you know, to get it done any faster is just really, I can't see how we could do that without mobilizing the Navy, I guess. And then amongst all of this, we're going to be analyzing the failures. We have been analyzing our failures to date, but, you know, since we put this GIS program into place, but there hasn't been that many failures to give us a lot of data. This is certainly going to give us a lot of data. We already had scheduled in our canal maintenance budget, through the recommendations of the advisory boards, to have the seawall panels re-engineered, starting in October. We had funds for that, so that was already planned. This data, along with our findings here, will be very instrumental in completing that task, as far as looking at new materials that are available, new efficiencies and stuff like that that have come onto the market since, I think it was about eight years ago that we last looked at our seawall panel design. And that's something that we'll have to go out to a consultant for because it requires soils engineers and structural engineers and much more power than we have on staff here at the city. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but we do have that list and map showing where we've tracked all the seawall failures, and hopefully that swells the residents' concern of whether or not they've been captured as having a problem.
Is that posted on our website somewhere?
I haven't seen it yet.
It will be.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay. I know it's evolving, but...
Daily. 113 calls yesterday, I think they logged.
Wow. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, go ahead.
After the council meeting this afternoon, the staff will be meeting again to fine-tune what our city engineer was discussing. So hopefully, we'll have this information in Friday's weekly report that gets sent out, and then give the community an idea of where we're going. Now, the other issue we're facing, which is not as dire as the seawalls, the debris removal, we were starting tomorrow. We and a bunch of other communities are experiencing truckers going elsewhere for better money. So I know the county was going to start debris removal Monday, but they didn't have the truckers show up, so I don't know if they've showed up since then. They still haven't, they still haven't shown up. So hopefully, we were expecting four truckers tomorrow. We're not going to get four truckers tomorrow. We're hoping on at least two. They can go into areas which even have more debris than we do, and they're paying more. So we're coming up with an alternate plan if we do not get the four truckers. And if we can get that alternate plan approved through FEMA, everything we're doing now, we're trying to get through FEMA. If we don't handle the seawall issue and have FEMA sign off on it, I'm not, I don't know what kind of impact that's going to do to the people in the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance District. Burnstour Isles, not so much. But the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance District, we need that FEMA reimbursement to try and lessen the load. So we're trying to do it every step of the way where FEMA will bless it. You know, that's where we are right now.
And I would just like to say the communication between the state and the federal officials have been open. There's conference calls almost daily that we can partake in, and so we've been in communication with all of those folks to, and meetings as well. I know you've had, the staff has had some meetings with them. So that's very reassuring that they're on board with what we're trying to accomplish here, and they know what our issues are. Yes.
One question for Mark. There's some residents asking me about the panels, and there's an assumption that panels, the rebar should be spliced together. Is that true, or is it, that's just in the air? People ask me about this. They assume when they saw the failures, the panels were falling individually, and they thought that the rebars were supposed to be welded together. Is that, I just wanted to make...
Only in the cap.
All right, only in the cap.
Not in the panels themselves.
All right.
By design, when they're separated like that, they don't continue to pull each other down. One thing that we will be doing is cutting some caps so that those walls that are falling don't pull other walls down. So, yeah, they're designed to be individual.
All right, thank you.
If you come to my neighborhood, I think you could see every type of failure that is possible. Along Bimini Lane and Aluthred, there's a lot of damage. I mean, that morning after was quite amazing to see. So, yeah, even my neighbor's yard, I walked their house the first day and didn't really see much, and then went back the second day, and the yard's starting to sag in the back. So there's going to be even more, I'm sure. Thank you for the updates. Thank you.
I won't make the time.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank staff for being so proactive, Ray and Mark and everybody. Those of us that lived through Charlie knew what that was like. We're hearing from Mark about, we're doing our own casting, but what we didn't hear from Mark was if there's a concrete shortage. Because when we tried to recover from Charlie, anybody that tried to rebuild a house went very quickly that a lot, there was a big demand, unusual demand on concrete, not just for our sea panels. So I want to commend you all for being proactive and getting us ahead of the foray so that we can get our community back to where we'd like to have it. So thank you, guys.
Nancy?
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff for all the information throughout the whole process, even before, during, and after. Residents have had lots of questions, and the information and the data that's been provided has been valuable in helping give people information, and that's what we're looking for. It's just, you know, and sometimes the information is already out there, whether it might be in a budget data or whatever, but people don't know that it's there. But people have commented on the amount of posts on Facebook and Nextdoor with information, so it really did help residents understand what was happening. And so really, I do appreciate that.
Ray, if you could convey to the county and to the school board and everybody else the mutual aid that was, you know, given to the city, we really appreciate it. I know the school board, you know, has demanded shelters in Port Charlotte because we were in the flood zone here. So even people not understanding why Punta Gorda didn't have a shelter, you know, that information is very valuable, and we appreciate all that they've done. I know the school board worked really hard to get the schools back open. So thank you. Relay that message. Thanks. Thank you. Any others?
I'll just also add my comments. I can't thank you enough, Ray, for spearheading the whole thing and keeping everybody working seamlessly. It was a complete team effort. I was blessed to be able to attend the meeting before the hurricane and after the hurricane, and the city staff, and Howard at the helm as well. It was a well-oiled machine. There was no hesitation. Everyone had a task. They went to task, and they did their job, and everything flowed so smoothly. This city is, we were back up and running within 48 hours after the storm, and it's just, it made me very proud to be part of this team. And all of you are to be commended for a very, very difficult job, and certainly, in the best of times, we don't always get the recognition we like, but in the worst of times, you certainly deserve it this time. So thank you all very much.
And just to note, Howard and our building department were ready to go even without the power on. They were ready to go to set up shop.
Yes.
Luckily, the power did come on, and people didn't have to wait in the heat. But yes, good job, well done. Okay, now is the time. Introduction of Border Committee members. If anybody would like to introduce themselves, and then we'll address the crowd issue. Anybody have their name in for a border committee and would like to introduce themselves? Please make your way to this podium, state your name, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
I don't know if I can...
Oh, you've got to come to the podium, sir. Are you introducing yourself for a border committee?
Uh...
Is your name in the running for a border committee?
No. I guess I'll have to wait.
Yep. Border Committee member nominees, if you've been nominated or you've put an application in.
My name's Rebecca Rasmussen. I'm a recent graduate of the Citizens Academy, which spurred me to apply for one of your openings, and I would like to serve on the Zoning Appeals Committee. I believe I have a strong background in business, 30-plus years in Fortune 500 companies, and a community experience as well, and I believe I could be a productive member of a committee for you. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody else like to introduce themselves? Okay, are you introducing yourself? Okay, so we have a seat, one seat available here. Okay, we don't have any public hearings, but we have quasi-judicial public hearings, first of which is an annexation, three go together for the Murphy Oil Annexation, the rezoning, and the Comp Plan Amendment. So we have three quasi-judicial hearings to do with Murphy Oil Annexation.
And also with respect to the Keystown project. So since those are quasi-judicial, anyone that's going to be providing testimony or evidence needs to rise to be sworn by the City Court at this time, please.
Please raise your right hand. Is that everybody? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings? And when you are ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and indicate that you've been sworn. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to address the crowd. At this point, we are, we have a full house. So everybody that will want to speak on any one of these items, you will be allowed, even if you're out in the hallway. You can make your way through the door, because if more people come in, we will have to have overflow out there in the hallway where there's a video monitor that you can hear all the proceedings of the meeting. So everybody will have a chance to speak, even if you're not able to make it into the room. All right, so first, we have AX-01-17.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Punta Gorda, Florida, annexing within the corporate area of the City of Punta Gorda property, generally described as Walmart, 5001 Taylor Road, and Murphy Oil, 26359 Jones Loop Road, Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, containing 25.93 plus or minus and 0.77 plus or minus acres respectively, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, redefining the boundary lines of said city in conformance therewith, amending the official boundary map of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, directing the city clerk to provide certified copies of this ordinance to the Charlotte County Clerk of Court, Charlotte County Administrator, Florida Department of State, and Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning, for the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Interim Manager. The applicant has submitted a petition for voluntary annexation to annex into the city boundaries. The subject property is contiguous to the current city boundaries, and when annexed, it will not create an enclave. A large-scale land use amendment will be required after the annexation is complete. We will be hearing that immediately after that petition, immediately after this one. Let's see, the property is existing and developed, it is a developed property. There will be no anticipated impacts on the area. And a pre-annexation agreement was previously signed and executed back in June of this year. The application is in order, and all statutory requirements have been met. We are seeking City Council approval of the proposed ordinance at this first hearing. We schedule a second hearing for adoption on October 4th, and Urban Design, as well as Planning Commission, have recommended approval. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Joan before we open the public hearing? Nope? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on AX-01-17, please make your way to the podium on this side, state your name that you've been sworn. You have three minutes.
Good morning, I'm Alicia Lewis. My address is 200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and I'm with the law firm Greenspoon Martyr, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Murphy Oil and Walmart. And I was at the Planning Commission hearing, and I'll pretty much state the same thing, but I wanted to add that I would like to commend Councilmember Pravsky. I got a call about two years ago from Councilmember Pravsky about this annexation, and it's been a long time coming. And, you know, dealing with large corporations, a lot of times when things change hands, people get promoted, you have to explain the entire process all over again, and she has weathered the storm and has really worked diligently to make this happen for the residents. I'd also like to commend the city manager, Howard Cunick, for continuing to answer my phone calls over the past two years, as well as the city attorney for expeditiously reviewing the annexation agreement and really working hard to move this process forward, as well as your planning staff. So I know you already know that from the explanation about the Hurricane Irma update that you heard, but you have an outstanding group of individuals that are working very, very hard for you. I get to travel across the state and work with all different cities, and I was actually in Pembroke Pines last night, so I will probably pass out when I get back to Fort Lauderdale. But I have the opportunity to see different cities and how they work, and you have a top-notch staff that's working very hard for you. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have, but again, they've done a wonderful job putting this together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
AX-01-17, would anybody else like to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes, and that you've been sworn, please. Anybody like to speak on AX-01-17? Last call, anybody out in the hall? AX-01-17.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I'll very gladly make a motion to approve AX-01-17, and it was also my pleasure to work with Alicia, so.
And I very gladly second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve AX-01-17. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, we have CP-02-17.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the City of Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for properties generally described as Walmart, 5001 Taylor Road, and Murphy Oil, 26359 Jones Loop Road, Punta Gorda, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, containing 25.93 plus or minus and 0.77 plus or minus acres respectively, from commercial general slash county to highway commercial corridor slash city, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Good morning, for the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Interim Manager. I'd like to first enter my staff report into record in its entirety. And this is the companion application with the previous annexation, and it is being submitted to change the city's future land use map to include and assign a future land use designation on the subject property from the county's commercial general to the city's future land use designation of highway commercial corridor. As this is an existing development, again, there are no anticipated additional impacts for the area. Urban Design and Planning Commission, as well as the DRC Review Committee, recommend approval of CP-02-17, and we also recommend approval of the transmittal of this Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and their reviewing agencies. This will be back for adoption sometime in November, December timeframe, for you to adopt and finalize the project. At this time, if there are any questions, we ask for a recommendation for approval to transmit the application to the DEO and then set the date for sometime in November and December.
Do we need to set a date?
Uh, no, because it'll be a 30...
Sorry.
We'll have to, it will depend on the reviewing agencies and whether or not there are any comments at that time.
Okay, so when it comes back from the DEO process?
Right.
So we could just...
We'll reschedule it for the next available City Council meeting.
Okay. No questions for Joan before we open it? Nope. This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on CP-02-17, now would be the time. If you would like to speak on this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, please come to the podium, state your name that you've been sworn. You have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on CP-02-17? Last call.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of CP-02-17.
With the submittal and the date?
Yes, as Joan specified.
Okay.
Second.
You have that motion, Karen? Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have Z-02-17.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, rezoning properties generally described as... as Walmart, 5,001 Taylor Road, and Murphy Oil, 26359 Jones Loop Road, Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too, from commercial general slash county to highway commercial slash city, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Again, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Interim Manager. Uh, this is, again, a companion application for the previous comp plan amendment that was previously read. The applicant is requesting a zoning designation change from the county's commercial general zoning designation to the city's highway commercial zoning designation. Urban Design and the Planning Commission find the request to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and we recommend approval of the Z dash zero two dash one seven. We are seeking council approval at this time for this, at this first reading, and we will schedule the second reading after, in, um, association with the comp plan. Once that is approved and comes back, we will assign this with that meeting date as well. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Joan on the zoning, rezoning? This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on Z zero two dash one seven, now would be the time. Please make your way to the podium, state your name that you've been sworn, you will have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on Z zero two dash one seven? Anybody in the hallway? Last call for Z zero two dash one seven?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Do you get the impression people want Walmart annexed? So, I'll make a motion to approve Z dash O two dash one seven.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second to approve Z zero two dash one seven. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have PD zero one dash one seven.
Yes, this is the, the main event.
Yes.
Um, this is our first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, rezoning properties generally described as 901, 1,001, and 1101 A Kia Star Drive, Punta Gorda, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too, containing 105.55 plus or minus acres, from its current zoning classification of general single-family, five units per acre, to planned development village, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Again, good morning. Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Interim Manager. The application before you was submitted to this, I'm sorry, a previous application. Uh, I'll give a little background on this project. A, application was submitted to the City of Punta Gorda back in 2016, proposing a mixed-use development, which included a wide range of commercial and residential uses, as well as private docking facilities. At the November 16th, 2016, public hearing, city council discussed this large-scale commercial development and the potential impacts to the residential neighborhood. The proposed planned development was denied by city council, and the city attorney reported that the applicant may modify the request and resubmit an application based on the comments provided at that meeting, which suggested a more residential project. The applicant has submitted a revised application with all commercial components removed and no other deviations from the Punta Gorda code is being requested. The agent for the owner of A Kia Star Drive, US, um, A Kia Star Drive, Panta, US Inc., has prov, has proposed a rezoning for the proposed address property from general single-family, five units per acre, to planned development village. The intent of the planned development village is a zoning designation that encourages efficient land use patterns, which conserve energy and natural resources and provide a variety of living and working environments, integrated with adequate open space and recreational facilities. It also allows the multi-family component that is not allowed under the general single-family, five units per acre zoning designation. As stated in Chapter 26, Article 5, Section 5.1C, Per N C., the maximum number of dwelling, of dwellings permitted in a planned development shall be calculated by multiplying the applicable comprehensive plan density limit or the density permitted by the existing zoning district, whichever is greater, expressed in dwellings per acre, by the gross total acreage of the planned development. Gross density is defined in the code as well as the number of dwelling units on the entire tract or parcel of land. All lands included within the calculations must be under the ownership of or control of the applicant. The proposed private condominium community will contain 23 buildings, a clubhouse and community recreation center, parallel boat slips, and a multi-slip docking facility. The project will contain 462 condominium units, which is less than the 528 units permitted under the existing single-family zoning GS5. There are no requests to deviate from the land development regulations regarding building height, building length, or building separation, and no increase in density is requested. There is no commercial component within the proposed project, and the applicant is requesting city council to waive the requirement for commercial lands as is permitted by Chapter 26, Article 5, Section 5.7, Per N B, Per N 1. City council may eliminate the requirement for lands used for shop fronts or work, and/or workplaces, subject to a finding that the proposed alternative arrangement more fully integrates the project into the community. Findings based on the city code ordinance, uh, Chapter 26, Section 5B, Per N B, Per N 1 through 3, um, the applicant has appropriate filed with the zoning official, and the required application forms are completed and signed, and the applicant and property owner have signed them. The application has been forwarded to the Development Review Committee, an applicable review agency for review and comment on the concept plan for the planned development village only. If approved, the applicant will be required to submit a development, um, review application for the site design and technical review prior to submitting for the building permits. So it will come back again. Pursuant to Article 16.1G, uh, Per N G, Per N 1 through 3, the proposed zoning amendment has been notified in the newspaper 15 days in advance of the public hearing today, and property owners within 200 feet of the property lines have been noticed 10 days prior to this meeting. A notice of public hearing sign was also posted on the subject property 15 days prior to the, to the meeting. Findings based on the city code ordinance, Chapter 26, Section 5.9, Per N B, Per N 5, Planned Development Plan Approval Criteria. No planned development plan shall be considered unless city council finds the proposed plan development promotes public health, safety, and welfare. To this end, an applicant for approval of the planned development shall show, um, and the city council shall find that a proposed development plan A is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. This request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The subject property is identified on the future land use map as residential. Policy 1.1.14.1 of the future land use element specifically designates this area as low-density residential. The applicant does not propose to change the current future land use map designation for this proposal. The low-density residential future land use category permits residential densities up to five units per acre. The five-unit-per-acre entitlement under policy 1.1.14.1 provides the inclusion of, and I quote, "other uses that are consistent with a residential character may be permitted subject to the requirement of land development regulations." Pursuant to Article 5, Per N A through G, the city's development regulations, planned developments call for city council to consider the following objectives in relation to a planned development concept plan. They are A, to promote harmonious mixture of land uses and housing types and housing cost, which will allow people to work and shop in the neighborhood in which they live. B, to encourage creative and innovative design to complement and enhance the city's visual character. C, to ensure adequate provision and efficient use of open space and recreational facilities. D, to provide for the enhancement and preservation of property with unique features such as historic significance, sensitive environmental resources, and scenic qualities. E, to promote good transportation design to minimize new traffic generation and separate pedestrian, bicycle, local residential, and through motor vehicle traffic. F, to reduce the public utility maintenance costs by encouraging efficient land use patterns. And G, to promote energy-conserving buildings and site designs and land use patterns. Under the policies and requirements of the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations, the proposed planned development village request represents a development pattern which will not necessitate a future land use map change. As a flume change is not required, there is no adverse impact anticipated by the planned development village zoning request. Under B, that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. To the north, south, and east of the project, the existing land use is low-density residential, and to the west, there is high-density residential. Under C, the proposed project mitigates conflicts of use with adverse impacts on existing and planned development. Existing vegetation and conservation enhancement of 49.04 acres of wetland areas of the property along with the required landscaping for new development will buffer the site and mitigate visual and auditory impacts to the, uh, surrounding areas. The proposed project under D provides adequate public facilities and amenities. The community will be served by central water and sewer. A master stormwater management system will both treat stormwater runoff and maintain post-development discharge at pre-development levels. Under E, the proposed development adequately accommodates anticipated motor vehicle traffic volumes, including emergency vehicle access. This is an entitled site, so consideration was given to the fact that regardless of the zoning, the site will contribute to increased traffic on the surrounding roads. However, existing entitlements would permit 528 single-family dwelling units. The proposal is for 462 condominium units. The traffic generated by the community will be less than what would be generated under the existing general single-family zoning. The traffic study provided by the applicant demonstrates that the proposed planned development village will not degrade traffic conditions along A Kia Star or any other roadway in the network below the City of Punta Gorda's Comprehensive Plans, Adopted Minimum Level of Service D for A Kia Star and C for US 41. Turn lanes were not a part of this application and were not analyzed as part of the rezoning application. Site-related roadway improvements will be evaluated during the development review process. Under F, the proposed development preserves ecologically sensitive areas to the extent practical. An environmental survey of the site has been submitted and has, and is an exhibit of this application. The conceptual plan provides for onsite stormwater management area. In addition, the proposed planned development conserves and enhances 49.04 acres of wetlands. Under G, the proposed project mitigates unfavorable topographical and geological conditions. The conceptual plan provides for an onsite stormwater management area, along with conservation and enhancement of 49 acres of wetlands. All invasive plant material will have to be removed prior to development. However, there, this will provide a positive impact on the subject property and all surrounding areas. Under H, the proposed development includes appropriate noise attenuation measures. There are no commercial components proposed for the planned development village, only multi-family residential dwelling units and associated recreational amenities, such as the pool and clubhouse. In addition, existing vegetation, conservation enhancement of the 49-plus acres of wetlands, along with the required landscaping for new development, will buffer the site and assist in mitigating visual and auditory impacts. Under letter I, there are nine requirements requested to be considered for conditions of approval. I states that it, the proposed project exhibits superior architectural treatment and site planning as measured by the following criteria. I1, architectural treatment should avoid massive monolithic and repetitive building types and facades. The architectural requirements will be reviewed at the time of development review, submittal for the site design and technical review submitting, uh, prior to submitting for building permits. I2, landscaping should increase the visual quality of building design, open space, vehicular and pedestrian areas, and screen areas of low visual interest, such as storage, delivery, et cetera, from the public view. A landscape plan will be required to be submitted for approval with development plans for the site design and technical review prior to applying for building permits. Once the landscape plan is approved, it is required to be maintained in perpetuity. I3, street and parking systems should contribute to the aesthetic character of the development. Street layouts and parking requirements will be reviewed at the time of development review for the site design and technical review prior to submitting for building permits. I4, signs shall be compatible with the design and scale of the development and contribute to the visual character of the development. All signs will be required to be submitted separately for review and permitting and must conform to the sign code current at the time of submittal. At this time, no conceptual plans for signage have been submitted. I5, neighborhood retail, commercial, and office uses where provided should blend architecturally with the surrounding residential uses or be appropriately separated by distance, screening, or topography. As no commercial component is proposed for the planned development village, only multi-family residential dwelling units with the associated amenities such as pools and clubhouses. I6, open space, recreation, and other public facilities should be integrated with the organizational scheme of the planned development. The proposed planned development village includes a clubhouse with a pool and other associated recreational amenities accessible for all condominium owners. Passive park space is proposed on the project's eastern boundary and adjacent to the multi-slip docking facility. I7, pedestrian and bicycle circulation system should be included to assure safe and convenient access between properties and within the neighborhood. The sidewalk requirements and pedestrian connections, again, will be reviewed at the time of development review for the site design and technical review prior to submitting for building permits. I8, non-residential uses shall be located on arterial or collector streets without creating traff, through traffic in residential areas. No commercial component is proposed for the planned development village, only the multi-family residential dwelling units, and they will be associated with amenities such as pool and clubhouse. I9, the development plan should be arranged to maximize the opportunity for privacy and security by the residents. The proposed site plan places the recreational facility amenities in the front of the property with the residential dwelling units and condominium buildings towards the rear. This site layout will allow for privacy and security of the development. Based on the approval criteria presented above, the Punta Gorda Urban Design Division offers the following conclusions. One, the requested rezoning to a planned development village is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map. Two, the requested rezoning reduces the residential density, uh, density from five units per acre to 4.3 units per acre. Conclusion three, the proposed development ensures conservation and enhancement of the 49.04 acres of wetlands. Conclusion four, the applicant has removed the commercial component and is only proposing a multi-family development with associated recreational amenities and docking facilities for the condominium owners. Staff requests that the requirements of Chapter 26, Article 5, Section 5.9, Per N 5, Per N I, Items 1 through 9, be considerations of approval. The proposed development meets the intent of the planned development village concept permitted within the land development regulations and is consistent with the provisions of the comprehensive plan. Urban Design staff and the Planning Commission, as well as the Development Review Committee, recommend approval of this application. I am available for any questions.
As I did before the, um, the Planning Commission- Yes, as I did before the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a comment for the record. As Ms. LeBeau has indicated, the project does include multiple docking facilities, and if the City Council approves this rezoning, those would be permissible uses under the approved rezoning. However, those are not vested rights. There are a number of legal and factual issues that would need to be resolved before permits could be issued by the city for those docking facilities. So I just wanted to let the record reflect that we're not, the approval of this action will not necessarily approve the construction of the docking facilities that are referred to in the application.
Does that mean you're not necessarily denied either? Without coming before us again?
They would not be, I'm not sure I understand the question. If you denied the rezoning, then there wouldn't be any...
No, I meant if we agree with this rezoning, specifically, my concern would be the docks that would be accessible by cutting a small path for the mangroves on the west side.
It would just, it would just allow the use of the property for docking facilities. It would not authorize the construction of those docking facilities, which would need to go through another permitting process. And as I said, there are some legal and factual issues that would need to be resolved before they would be entitled to those permits.
Okay, so my question then is ultimately, would that permitting process be required to come before this body?
No.
So if we were to approve this process, does this body have the authority to say that that would have to be a requirement?
Our ordinance, we have a chapter relating to docking facilities, and that was approved by the City Council. So presumably, as long as the applicant met the requirements for docks as specified in that chapter, they would be entitled to a permit. I don't believe that you could make a special provision above and beyond the requirements of the code as relates to the docking facilities. But I see that I might be corrected in my assessment.
Good morning. Lisa Hanen, interim zoning official for the record, and I have been sworn. You're pretty correct, Mr. Levin, on what you have said. Any type of deviation from regular docking facilities, this would be required to submit a special permit through the Public Works Division Department. That special permit would go through the Canal Advisory Board for approval or denial. If they did deny that, then they could appeal and come to City Council for approval. But I believe that the Canal Maintenance Advisory Board now has the power to approve such permits without them coming to City Council.
Thank you for the correction.
Nancy?
It's my understanding that this is not a part of PGI itself, so if we were to approve, as it is, with some type of docking facility, whatever that might be, that we would then need to stipulate that they need to become a part of the assessment district and comply with all of the codes therein.
That is correct.
Including seawalls and everything.
That is correct. It would be up to the applicant and the Canal Advisory Board to bring them into the Canal Maintenance District. They are not part of that at this time.
Yeah, I think I was asked to look into whether we can mandate that they become part of the district, and the code provisions relating to the district do not allow for that. However, some of the legal issues that remain outstanding could result in a voluntary request by the property owner to become part of the district so that those legal issues can be To give you, to be perfectly frank, the legal issue that I have raised, I know that the applicant may not agree with my assessment, but the docking facilities as proposed along the northern boundary are located on property that is outside of the legal...